States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Everybody who's wondering about my votes.
Oh, you did?
Okay, so we are done with presentations, right?
Yeah.
We're on to public participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the floor on the budget? Okay, then we'll move on to budget discussion and vote stuff. Let me share the screen here. So there are a couple of changes right off the rip that we can incorporate. The first, that is most significant, Amy and her staff went back and looked at the twenty seventh payroll in our benefits line. And we're actually no longer at the top end of that, we're on the bottom end of that. So she is recommending that we can reduce that line by two hundred and five thousand.
No, two hundred and thirty.
It's inherent two oh five.
That's a change from last year. But the number was two seventy five.
So a reduction of two hundred and thirty thousand from two seventy five down to forty five.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, that is good.
Because it's only two days now.
Yeah, okay.
Next year will be two days.
Okay.
So, um, any discussion on that? May I have a motion?
Make a motion to reduce the seventeen payroll line. I had to.
Twenty seven payroll.
The twenty, what I said seventeen, oh, twenty seventh payroll, um, uh, reduce the amount by two hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, against the green treatment. Um, the second one, we got some good news on health insurance renewals. Uh, we were told to budget between a three and seven percent renewal rate. Then they narrowed that down to between three and five percent, and the final renewal rate number came in at two percent. Um, so that's still moving in the right direction. Um, and Amy looked at the number of employees that are coming, uh, that we have who are becoming, uh, either employee plus one or full family and figured them out down to the person. So, uh, our budget number instead of being one million eight hundred and two thousand forty three dollars can be one million seven hundred and fifty eight thousand ten dollars. So that's an additional savings of forty four. Forty four thousand.
Want the numbers through somebody for a motion?
Yeah, that would be great.
I have a. Forty four oh thirty three.
Is the same as.
Is the same. Forty four thousand thirty two dollars.
So could I have a motion to set our, uh, health insurance line at one million seven hundred and fifty eight thousand ten dollars?
I'll move to make our health insurance line one million seven hundred and fifty eight thousand and ten dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I was thinking about my.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Um, we have one line that needs to go up. And that is in town properties. Our hydrants, hydrants bill, um, is going up by, um, two thousand seven hundred and eighty three dollars. Uh, and that's just to reflect the change in renewal rates, just so everybody has some context here. Um, Connecticut Water Service, our renewal rate numbers every year, but they do it after my budget is submitted every year. So we have this problem every year. Um, but nonetheless, the difference between what I had budgeted at four sixty and what is actually going to be is two thousand seven hundred and eighty three dollars.
Is that because we have more hydrants this year?
I don't think it's more.
No, that's a price, it's a price thingy going up, the prices going up. But they're also having a reduction in a credit they they were giving us this year. So this year, you're actually going to see when we get to the end of the year analysis that the this year number is going to be too high. But the other thing is they only budget through December. So what I just got only gets us through next December. So I have estimated January through June being the same number as it is as December. Because I have nothing else to go on.
Okay, could I have a motion to adjust that number to four, four hundred and sixty two thousand seven eighty three?
Move to make, um, these water hydrants.
Hydrants, yep.
Move to make the water hydrants line four hundred and sixty two thousand seven hundred and eighty three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a, I have a just a general question. So on the, we have, we have a contract?
No.
The water company?
No, not.
Until they.
They just sent us the bill?
Yep.
And? They is the, do what we pay depending upon whether the hydrants work and have been inspected and everything, we?
I have no idea. We get charged per year per, depending on the size of the pipe and the number of hydrants we have.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That leaves us, before we get started in anything else. And I've got one more area where I think that there's going to be some savings, but I can't, we can't talk about it until after the executive session. We're at a two point three six percent spending increase on the town government side. The schools keep, I know you were curious about this, the school number came in, they're at a four point seven five percent increase.
That was voted on last night.
So. Well, we'll start at the top, work our way down?
Sure.
Just, do we know what they reduced in their budget?
I do not, no. I've got a.
All in favor of eliminating the police department? Are you quiet? That was a joke.
Uh, no, I just got told what the number was.
Six, that's, that's just before we go down to the banking system top line, double question, but sure. So the, um, the budget comparison with last year, that number, that two point three six percent, is that based, that comparison with the? Um, approved budget last year, or is that, is, is that a comparison with the adjusted budget last year?
Well, the only, there's no change to the budget right now. I think we're exactly at the same amount. Alls we've done is reallocate some of the non-negotiated wages to the other lines. So it is the revised budget, but there have no allocations, additional allocations this year. So the number is exactly what we voted on last year.
So there was no, uh, special appropriations for anything in the, in the, there's no special appropriations for anything in the town, uh, expenses?
Nope.
So we had no special appropriations at all?
Not yet.
Oh, I thought that's, so I thought there was some comedians with special appropriations last year.
This would be from July first forward?
And then I had asked, um, the general question about, you just said the, um, non-negotiable. I'm sorry, the, uh, non-negotiated expenses.
Yeah.
Are all of the non-negotiated expenses, why did it for?
Well, the two things we have is right there on that bottom section, right below the employee benefits, has non-negotiated wages. So that is the police union, the dispatcher union, the supervisor union, and unaffiliated employees. That's the one forty number, and the actual number is one thirty nine, eight fifty four, ninety one. So we don't want to give out the particulars because that's not negotiated yet with the unions.
So, so you use like a, a general number, calculate a percentage just for ourselves, for our, for our town's benefit?
Yeah.
And apply it against the, the wages?
It's in that non-negotiated wage line right now.
Are there any other?
The other non-negotiated stuff is that contingency line.
Right?
That we do as a general contingency for the town. Those are the only two things in the budget.
So a hundred percent of, of what's needed to pay anticipated, uh, salary increases and benefits? For union negotiations for this year, a hundred percent of that's in the budget? You know what I'm saying?
As far as we know at this point, yes, I mean.
It's a gap.
Getting banged in our position.
Right, it's a guess, but.
Right. And are there any other items that are not, um, funded through the budget that are not in the budget right now? Are there any other, uh, expenses to the town that are, um, that are not in this budget?
Not that we know about.
And so. Okay, alright, thank you.
I mean, things break, things happen.
Right, uh, retaining all, all.
I mean, things happen, but as of right now, this is everything we know we need on the town side of the government.
Okay.
With adjustments through today.
And we don't have the revenue side in terms of?
We do.
Oh, you have to pay the taxes here?
Um, the next section, before we get to the things, we might as well do that. So you got everything but use of fund balance and tax revenue?
Right.
But the, but this spreadsheet here has everything in it. So it has a new grant list of one point six million, or one point six billion. Right, uh, one four six two something. So that's a large increase because of the revaluation. And then all the other revenues you knew about, except the use of fund balance that Jay's requesting is one point two million, so that is your revenues.
So the, so the, uh, the adjustment in the mill rate that you have on here, nine, the nine something adjustment? Is about, just so I just did with math here.
Math is already done for you right here.
Yeah, the math's already done.
Twenty seven point three percent reduction.
It's going down nine point something those.
Point three six million.
Would the mill rate be adjusted to roughly the forty percent increase in the, in the, uh, revaluation values in town? Why would it all be adjusted twenty seven percent?
It's inverse, it's an inverse, really, uh, inverse relationship.
So there aren't people, it's not forty isn't a set thing. There's people that are at eighty and there's people that are going down.
Yeah.
Mostly commercial are going down, so they're actually going to pay less taxes next year, so other people are going to pay more taxes. So there's not a forty percent reduction.
Yeah, I wouldn't say necessarily anyone's gonna, they, they, commercials kind of see a reduction, depends on their, on their assessments.
Right.
Their average assessments, and I assume that commercial assessments also went up, so I would say.
No, there are commercial assessments that went down.
Some went down, but on average, commercial assessments went up, not as much as.
I don't know, I'm not the assessor.
Yeah, so, so the question I have then, I understand where the mill rate changes, but. Without the, the revenue side, or the amount, did you put amount for fund balance in here?
Yes, I put one point two hundred.
I thought you told me in the last meeting where I was told that the fund balance amounts are set by the Board of Finance.
And they are.
There, there's a recommendation about, this is, and this is consistent with what we did last year. We've been using, uh, fund balance every year since two thousand and seven.
Right, and is the?
Longer than that, longer than that.
State revenue is on here a little bit lower, I take it?
Uh, it's like fifty four hundred dollars.
No.
No, no.
State revenue is higher because we're getting Pequot money.
I can't see state revenue longer than last year. Was it on the chart, the lower?
Yes.
Eight hundred and seven thousand dollars, sorry.
So are we going to vote tonight on the recommendation to send over budget?
Hello? You're going to vote on whatever your expenditure budget needs to be.
Why would you be voting?
Today? You're going to take a.
I hope that was shower.
Why would we be voting on a budget where it's balanced with fund balance, but we're not voting on this, uh, we're not, we're not voting to? Why, why would we be only voting on the expenditure side?
You vote on yours, Board of Ed votes on theirs, or the Board of Finance votes on everything overall.
Right, but you, but why are we sending over recommendations for fund balancing?
Because that's what we did last year and in twenty one, just like you told us.
Right, I was right, yeah, so we just said, I did, we, we said we don't do that.
You don't get to approve it, but you can send whatever you want for a recommendation.
Okay, so I'd like to know, I'd like to know the impact of the budget on taxes in addition to the percent of spending increase, because I think that.
And you have that right there.
No, I don't.
The very top line, Jay, on that spreadsheet.
Oh. Percent increase in taxes?
Is one point seven.
One point seven percent.
Current levy, one point seven percent.
Five hundred and ninety nine thousand dollars.
So in the current, that's, that's, so we do have estimated, um, taxes.
We do now.
Because I got the Board of Ed budget today.
Okay, so we have estimated taxes is, is, uh. Proposed is higher than last year, thirty five million eight hundred and ninety three thousand dollars, an increase of five hundred and ninety nine thousand dollars.
Yes.
And that will derive a, a, a spending increase of two point three something percent.
Well, plus the Board of Ed's, which we have no control over.
Two point three six is just us, that's not the whole thing.
I understand.
The Board of Ed's is in there at four point seven five right now.
Right, okay, well, glad we got your numbers, because I thought we weren't going to have them tonight.
They passed it last night.
No, I'm glad we had the numbers on the revenue, you told me that the.
That was all I was waiting for, was the Board of Ed to pass their budget. We talked about that last time.
Let me finish speaking for a second. I was told, you told me specifically, that we don't get revenue numbers and we don't deal with fund balance. That's all done down the road by Board of Finance. And I asked for it, I asked for it, and I'm just saying I'm glad, I'm glad it's here tonight.
I asked, and, and. We told you, you would have it before you voted.
I.
After the Board of Ed voted on theirs.
I understand.
The Board of Ed voted on theirs.
Right.
So now I can put my spreadsheet together.
Good, I'm glad, I'm just saying, I'm thank you for getting the data for the revenue.
And as I said to you.
Yeah.
There's a process, let the process take its place, and you'll get what you need.
Right.
The process works.
Right, except originally I wasn't. Okay, I'm ready to go through the budget.
We're ready to.
I, I wasn't being so hasty when I said I'm ready, I'm just saying, but, um, I, my questions are done, and I'm ready to, without the process.
So let's start with the Selectments Budget. Does anybody have any changes or corrections here?
I do.
What would you like to discuss?
So I'm just a little surprised by the two budgets that went way above the, the first Selectment's request to, to departments to come in at a, I think it was a two percent spending increase, so two. So, because I understand it, the first Selectment sent down a notice to all the departments, it said, bring me a budget that's, you know, two percent over the last year's budget. And two of the departments came out, came in with much larger increases than the requested numbers, and they didn't come in and justify why they were over the two percent that was first Selectment requesting. They just put the numbers out there without any justification why they needed more than the two percent. So all the other departments came in at below two percent, the, um, uh, Parks and Recreation and Public Works. Now, all the other, all the, the other departments, including the Police Department, including, uh, the, the Treasurer Department, and the Clerks Department, and every other department in town. Followed the instructions and came in under two percent.
I'll explain why.
Well, I'd like to, we'll finish for a second, if I could. All the other departments came in under two percent as requested, meaning that those department heads did a pretty good job of managing their budgets. And I understand that, uh, that there was a wage increase in the, in, by union increase in those departments. To me, that's not an excuse. For why they came in above two percent without justification.
But the other departments don't have union increases in there. Police has no police union increases, no dispatch union increases.
No.
And no supervisor. So three of the unions are out. One, two staff in the Police Department actually have raises other than the chief and the deputy. So that means as soon as you put a wage increase, even if it's only two percent on that budget, they're going to be over.
Right, in my opinion.
And the other two departments you requested, DPW is totally in contract, and so is clerical. So they only have one person out of contract. All their other employees are in contract.
I just.
So that's the difference.
Well, no, I don't think that solves the, the question, or that, that's not the difference. That explains why, um, that, that their budgets are. Their budgets should be at around the, the, the percent of the other town departments. And I think that they should be looking for cuts in other areas. I mean, it's, we do.
So let's get back to the question again. In this budget, where would you like us to cut?
I'd like to cut the, um, the, um, Parks and Recreation.
That's not the one we're on, we're on the Selectments Budget.
Oh, you, you didn't ask that question?
I did ask that. Oh, in this budget, on the screen, where, where would you like to cut?
I apologize, when you said Selectment Budget, I thought you were talking poorly, I didn't mean.
No, we're going department by department.
By error, I probably.
Okay, so. On this question, the first budget, the first department budget in the budget. Are there any changes?
I don't have any, the only thing, if I have a comment on the sorting budget, is the additional two thousand dollars for the new community group. That you want to join.
That's in activities fees, not in.
Then just regarding, with you some please.
Four one one one. Any, any changes or correction? May I have a motion? Three oh nine two thirty. I'm like two hundred and fifty.
Move to approve the Selectments Budget number four one 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 at three hundred and nine thousand two hundred and thirty dollars.
Okay.
Motion has been made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, ethics.
Move to approve the Ethics Commission Budget at seven hundred and fifty dollars for four one one four.
Is there a second? Motion has been made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Would we be opposed to taking these next two together? Anybody?
No.
Well, one of them, one of them.
Doesn't matter.
Okay, yeah, do your thing.
So could I make a motion that we, um. Put the Ethics Commission at seven hundred and fifty dollars and the Diversity Council at zero?
We, we did Ethics for Diversity, excuse me.
And six. And, and the arts, okay, yeah, so rescind that motion, make a motion to put the Diversity Council at zero and the Arts and Culture Commission at?
By thousand. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have, I have some discussion.
Go ahead.
Um, this, this, uh, essentially eliminates the Diversity Council. It basically doesn't fund them at all, and it says we're not going to fund them at the rate of anything, that's what I read it. I know the Diversity Council Commission has been, uh, was designed as an important commission in town, I'd say council rather. It was designed as to be a very important, uh, council in town that was supposed to represent the. The needs of, uh, minority people and, uh, unrepresented people in our community, um, including, uh, poor people, including, um. All the people of different cultures. I know that they've been struggling to get membership, um. And I don't think we should just simply defund them. It's essentially defunding our Diversity Council so that they won't be able to operate. I think we need to fund them at the, at the appropriate level, which should be seven hundred and fifty dollars, just like any other commission. And we should make it work, and find volunteers and get that Diversity Council going. There's a vote to zero, there's a vote to defund Diversity Council tonight. I'm opposed to that.
I personally don't see it that way, there's no sense, uh, right now, and I don't know if, I don't remember ever seeing it, but in the University Council meetings, I went to a bunch. Bunch of them were, was called off to lack of, uh, forum. It fell apart. It really, in, in effect, does not exist at this point in time. If we wanted to reconstitute, if the people wanted to get it back together, we could certainly come up with seven hundred and fifty dollars for, you know, for somebody to take the minutes. But at this point in time, it effectively does not exist.
Nor, nor did they ask for anything. They were, they were solicited repeatedly and did not ask for anything.
Well, I, I, I agree that, um, I agree, Alan, that the, uh. That the, uh, committee, the committee fell apart and they don't exist, but I think it's our responsibility. As a Board of Selectmen, populate our boards and commissions, and it was our, it's our responsibility to give volunteers onto that Diversity Council if we think it's important, so. Respectfully, I, I agree that, um, those members that were on there didn't do their job or for whatever reason decided not to continue with their activities, but.
Well, actually, it was, they did a great job, they were doing a lot of great work, it's just that, that a lot of them, their lives got in the way of what they were doing, so they decided to make something else a priority. I don't think they did a bad job. But be that as it may, they don't really exist at this point, they didn't ask for the money. And seven hundred and fifty dollars, if so, if they did reconstitute this year, we could come up with that. So I don't think we should just put the money there and for no reason, really. I mean, in reality, we don't know if it's, if there's going to be enough people to put it back together, right?
Could I, could I ask a question? Does it still, to the first Selectman, does it still exist?
The Diversity Council?
No, they've turned out.
They've turned down without re, reappointment?
Yeah, and their commission has expired too. They were on an eighteen month appointment. Any further discussion?
I just have one question, should we put a, um, dollar amount in there, just keep the line open?
No.
It's because their term ran out, right?
And I would mind you seven hundred and fifty bucks if you get a commission together, I'll find you seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Uh, motion carries three to one. Board of Finance. Board of Finance. Uh, it's sixty eight thousand nine seventy five.
You're on the hook for discussing this.
Yeah.
Did you get a hard copy of this?
Or, or also can't see. Have we got any emails or something? I'm sorry, then.
Thank you.
Oh, no, it's just about this. They had to roll.
Do, do you have a clean copy there, Jay? I can make copies.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be.
Thank you, that would be appreciated. I, I scribbled all over my, uh, I scribbled all over mine.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Everything's the same then.
I moved the wrong way.
I can make an option though. Move to approve Board of Finance four one one eight at sixty eight thousand nine hundred and seventy five dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote? Assessor votes.
Hey. Make a motion to accept the Assessor's budget line at two hundred and twenty two thousand three dollars.
Is there a second? Motion has been made in seconded, any discussion on the Assessor's budget? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Board of Assessment Appeals.
Make a motion to accept the Board Assessment Appeals budget line at two thousand nine hundred and twenty five dollars.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Tax Collector.
Make a motion to accept the Tax Collector line and get that thing out of the way. One fifty five thousand four hundred and sixty six.
One hundred and fifty five?
One fifty five four sixty six.
Did you say that?
Issue it.
I did, okay.
Any discussion? Is there, I'm sorry, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have, I have a question, but, um, so there's a part-time salary at twenty five hundred and eighty dollars. But there's full-time salaries of a hundred and thirty five thousand four hundred and sixty two dollars. Is, is there some reason why the full-time employees have to hire a part-time worker at twenty eight hundred and fifty dollars?
I have, I think it's because when Patty is out at conferences, they need additional coverage, that's what I have written that.
Yeah, we hear. Or Heidi were both.
When they, when they go to the city labor conferences?
Yes.
Okay.
Or, or illness or, uh, lunch breaks, you know, they stagger their lunch breaks when they're both here, but one of them is out on vacation or out sick, they're, they need coverage to keep you up.
I forgot that she's sick.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Treasurers line.
Make a motion to accept the Treasurers' proposed budget at two hundred and eighty one thousand four hundred and twenty seven.
Two hundred and one?
Two hundred and eighty one four twenty seven.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Capital Improvement Committee.
Make a motion to accept the Capital Improvement Committee's proposed budget at eight hundred and seventy five dollars.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Legal.
Make a motion to accept the proposed budget at two hundred and ninety five thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have some question or discussion. So in twenty twenty one, twenty one, twenty two, the budget was. Two hundred and seven thousand, and now the budget is two hundred and ninety five thousand dollars. It's not quite a fifty percent increase, but we've had a, a forty five percent increase in that budget. Over three years. Which seems quite a lot, and I know that there's some disagreements, there's some reason why, but. Um, shouldn't we be looking to manage that budget rather than, at this point, given the very significant increases over the last several years? Rather than just continuing to. Increase it just because.
We also have three contracts that are up, so we need to take that into. We also have three contracts that are up, so we need to take that into consideration as well.
The hourly rate that the town is paying the town attorney is like twice the going annual rate for municipal attorneys. Um, town also paying the town attorney to do evictions, I mean, like foreclosures at a rate of I think it's like three hundred dollars an hour, everybody, all the people in town that are, that are subject to these foreclosures and taxing sales are paying that attorney at a rate which is not the going rate for that kind of work, and so.
The town's not paying that though.
The cap, no, so.
The, the town budget is not paying.
The town, that's fair enough, I wanted to make a point, it's unfair to the people that are having to save their homes that have to pay a town approved attorney fee rate that is way above the normal going rate, because they have to pay that in order to keep their houses at a foreclosure, but fair enough, but we are paying about, I think, twice the going rate for new municipal attorney that's going out to bid, I hope we can get the biz and take a look, all I'm saying is, is that, I thought that the contracts were up.
Labor cost.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not targeting the labor costs, the, the cost for the ninety five thousand dollars for the labor. I'm targeting the total cost. We should be making efforts to bring our attorney fees in line with the same kind of, at least the same kind of increases that the other departments have to afford. This is an increase of five point three percent, six three point, five point three six percent, about forty five percent over the last three years for attorney fees and, and, uh, and I just think that is, uh, we're ready now at almost three hundred thousand dollars in a very small town like we have, paying for a town attorney, so, for legal fees, so, um, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go go for this unless it's a, um, anyone willing to make a, make an adjustment at least down to, to like one percent, just to keep this line out of your chat.
Any further discussion?
Like, based upon what we're seeing, um, with the solar, um, that's into town, not knowing where those are going to continue going with, um, uh, legal issues, um, and other issues that we've had to deal with that may be continuing going on, and ninety five thousand, which is two hundred and seven back whenever you first started off, that ninety five thousand added to that, um, equals to the two ninety five, and that's for three contracts that we have, um, that we don't know how long it's going to take to do, and always going to go, so, um, and the cost of our attorney went up, um, so I don't have a problem keeping at the two ninety five.
Any further discussion?
I like the service we've been getting, actually, I think we've done fairly well in the situations that we've been in, so, um, don't have any, any, any desire whatsoever to change, and I think we need this money, it's been, as you know, very litigious few years, everybody wants to sue, so we've got to make sure we cover and then.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, uh, activities and fees, so here, I'm gonna let them listen to that stuff out, um, I, I think I know there are some, some, we can't accept this as a department, I think there are some people who have some individual questions or comments, so I want to allow through those. Um, so why don't I go through the ones that are per capita assessments? Um, and we could probably do those as a group, and then we can go through the rest. So that would be, uh, probate, North Central Health, CCM, hold on, that's the probate, North Central Health, CCM, CROG, Greater Hartford Transit, North Central Mental Health. Those are the ones that are on a per capita basis. So could I have a motion to accept those as presented?
Make a motion to accept probate for North Central Health, CCM, Native Transit District, North Central Native, um, Mental Health.
The other one was CROG.
And CROG, thank you. As presented.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, all right, so now we're, uh, the first one in that budget cluster that, um, is not spoken for on a per capita basis is recognition. Um, these are the things that we use when we, when we do the plaques or, um, that's really what we use this for. But it's a nice thing that we do, I, I, I think it's appreciated by the people who, uh, who get that, we were just talking about one that we absolutely need to do in the very short term.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't have.
Move to approve recognition at fifteen hundred dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Memorial Day Parade.
Move to approve Memorial Day at twelve hundred dollars.
Motion has been made in seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Metro Hartford Alliance.
Move to approve the Metro Hartford Alliance at two thousand two hundred and twenty dollars.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, uh, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Cemetery Association.
To approve the Cemetery Association at twenty five thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, East Windsor Health and Wellness.
Move to approve East Windsor Health and Wellness at six thousand nine hundred and thirty five dollars.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Fort Town Fair.
Need to approve the Fort Town Fair at five thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, any discussion?
Are we the most community?
We are.
For twenty four, twenty five, we will be.
Thanks.
We're paying for the garbage, we also want the parade.
No.
We don't want to collect garbage.
Uh, he was, he was saying no to the having to be in the parade.
Oh.
Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Network Against Domestic Abuse.
I move to approve the Network Against Domestic Abuse at five thousand dollars.
Seriously, motion has been made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Inevits. American Heritage River Commission.
Move to approve the American Heritage River Commission at four thousand two hundred and eighty dollars.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Melrose School.
Move to approve the Melrose School at five hundred dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Here. UR Community Cares, this is the new one.
Yes.
I can follow me on my Facebook and I put up, um, and I don't, I don't know what we're going to gain out of it, and I don't know who is interested in joining that, being a part of it so that we can get something out of it, um, but I don't care what the joke of the morning.
What?
The joke of the morning, you could put out a joke one day, we'll wait for that, um, and it sounds like Manchester is the hub on, that's being worked out of, you know, the relatively new, even though they've been around for a while, but they're just extending themselves, so I don't know why we want to draw it on, what the benefits, what's it going to be? But that's just me, so.
Can I just ask a, a question, um, just refresh my memory, the thousand dollars, does that go to covering background checks for the volunteers?
Okay, volunteers and recipients.
Okay, and that's the only thing that we'd be contributing to?
That's correct. And once the funding runs out, clients and, and volunteers, they shut the door on that.
And it's pay as you go, right, we're, we put the thousand there, if nobody requests it, we have a thousand there.
So who's running this program?
There is nobody down the line.
The individual who reached out to UR Community Cares.
Yeah, there's a, we have a constituent who, um, was interested in participating, found out that she was precluded by the organization because we're not a member of the community, and she asked that this be.
Also, East Windsor residents want to partake in their services.
Right.
Then we have to be a member of that organization for them to take advantage of that.
If they want to partake in the services or volunteer, and this person was interested in volunteering, that was.
Right, so we would.
I did not, I didn't understand that, and I need to clarify that, because you don't need extra work in town right now.
And it would be up to that organization to let people know that East Windsor is now a member and people can get services, or how would that?
I'm not sure how they plan on, on coordinating that. I'll tell you, if you're uncomfortable about the thousand dollars, one of the things that, and this was an idea borrowed from Manchester, they, they funded a significant portion of their work using ARPA dollars, um, but what we could do is recommend that they apply for a grant through the Greater, the Greater Together Committee, um, which actually be significantly in keeping on what their mission is to. I'm, I'm not saying take it out, but if you're uncomfortable with it.
I'm not uncomfortable, but I just wanted, I just wanted a better understanding of it, so I can explain it on the road, and I didn't have that going back on.
What I, what I understood from this, because I, the, the woman that contacted the town was contacting a lot of people about, she'd been doing this for a few years, approaching the town, and, and what they do is they, um, they want to connect East Windsor residents with services, but the service providers will not often connect with residents or volunteers if they don't have background checks, so this co, this organization is like a catalyst, it's not itself providing services, but because it does the background checks, it allows the residents in the community access to a whole variety of different programs that want to provide services but need that they're that they need.
I don't have any objections to where the goal.
Yeah, I'm not opposed, can we try and see?
The thousand dollars.
We're not sending them a thousand dollars.
Right.
No, she didn't really talk about that.
No, and, and based on where it's included, I kind of think it would be, here's your thousand dollar check.
I think that they, my understanding is they, they do background checks and they, they, the town, the town pays only for the background checks that are done, and I think that's what the presentation was earlier, we're going to get up to like twenty or twenty back, or whatever they charge, fifty dollars, seventy five dollars.
I think it's a hundred dollars a person, both sides.
All right.
So it would get us ten, five, five volunteers and five people.
My concern is, we send them a thousand dollars and that's gone, but nobody asked for any help, but we sent them a thousand dollars, right? Like, so like, I don't know how that, my understanding was we pay as we go, and we set aside this thousand bucks, and then.
So we could, we could sit there and have that conversation with her that will send her the hundred bucks so she can do the one volunteer that wants to do it, and that if she needs other money, let us know, I mean.
I think, I think we should, it's, but it's in the budget, I think we should, it's just as important as the, as some of the other things, and we should, um, only do it on the basis of paying per, per unit, um, I agree with Alan, you know, everybody else, we shouldn't be sending money into a black hole, but paid per unit up to a thousand dollars, we have a budget for that, and if it's a catalyst and it's going to do a lot of good, then we could just do great, if it doesn't, then, then we, we learn, we learn a lesson.
Agreed. Okay, so I move to approve your Community Cares at one thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and the total department budget unamended is a hundred and twenty nine thousand thirty dollars.
Move to approve activity fees and associations at one hundred and twenty nine thousand thirty dollars.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the Information Technology proposed budget at three hundred and fifty three thousand three hundred and twenty six.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, all in favor, I'm sorry, discussion?
Yeah, I, I have, I, I have a lot of questions with this game of, for budget, budget presentation, this is already a three hundred and fifty three thousand dollar line item, the latest increase is eight point five three percent, and we don't have anybody in town actually managing our IT department, we pay consultant twenty thousand dollars, it sounds like, to do the daily work, and we need to, um, have somebody do the planning and the audits and make sure that, that this stuff happens, we've been done properly, and plan for future, and find efficiencies. So the way this is happening right now, I sound like the presentation is well, it orders are coming in for software, we're just budgeting for the orders that come in from the departments, we're paying a consultant to roll out the, uh, the work, and compared to the, like, the IT work that's happening in the police department, very different. I, I, I'm concerned about the dollar amount, and I'm concerned about the increase, and I think it needs to be reorganized, but we thought we should have a discussion about could we be, you know, having somebody plan for the future and looking at weaknesses and doing our audits, and how's that all happening? But an eight point, an eight point five three percent increase, the budget was two hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars three years ago, and now it's gone up in three years, hundred thousand dollars, which again, when you math it like forty percent in three years, that's just like not sustainable for, for a department that's sort of being outsourced, so I'm just don't feel comfortable approving that kind of increase on that kind of budget amount without a better explanation from the department head or from somebody as to why why we keep investing money into this sort of non-sustainable process that doesn't even generate audits, that might generate audits, I'm not sure, it doesn't generate a future plan, it doesn't generate where we need to be in five years, it's just daily buying software and implementing software, so I'm just not comfortable with approving a budget that's in that kind of, that process. So yeah, no. So we came from and this goes back in the ways, but we had three, three employees, three employees, and a incredibly decrepit error prone system, we got rid of all of it, right, and then we virtualized, and we hired another guy, ended up getting arrested, right? Right, so then we went with the contract, which has worked out pretty well, um, and so this is bigger because we're keep on finding things that are elsewhere that need to be here, right? One, two, uh, we've done, you know, the vision, we, uh, what's the permit link, all that, we've done a number of things that have increased capability, right, and then, of course, cost more over long term, but, um, everybody seems to be really happy with it, that process wasn't just somebody clicked a button and bought it on Amazon, we all were involved in it, you know, and it took months to finally approve it, so it may look like, well, we're just buying software, putting it in here, doing it, but all of that software has been discussed and multiple back and forths between us and the department heads, a lot of research, documentation, everything that went into these upgrades and migrations, so I, I agree, we're getting to the point where we may need somebody to be looking at this on a daily basis, I'm not sure we're quite there yet, but we're getting close, I, I would agree with that, um, but, um, I, I just want to I want to say it's not just like willy nilly, we're buying software and it just keeps going up, that number has been substantiated in every sense, you know, every one of those upgrades, every one of those, we, we went a different direction, we, you know, all this stuff has been looked at, and and it's paying dividends, everybody loves it. I mean, you, I mean, you've said it yourself, uh, you know, the way you can get permits now and research and all that stuff is light years from where it was five years ago. Right, so I, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna respect, I respect what you had to say, I'm gonna, I'm actually gonna support it basically, the way you set it out, and the reason is, is because I'm gonna trust, I trust that, that you've put a lot of effort to get us here, the history and the history of it, but at the same time, we need to figure out some method for controlling costs, because this isn't sustainable.
Well, I think, I think what, you know, a good point is we need somebody that's negotiating all these contracts, and, and, and that maybe, we may be getting to the point where we need somebody to do something, we should look at it, I agree with that.
Okay.
Any further? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Sound card. Make motion to accept the panel's third proposed budget one hundred and seven, hundred and sixty one thousand one hundred and seventy four.
Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Alright, registrars, so this was a intentionally a long-winded part of our conversation at our last budget meeting, there was stuff we need to talk about. Um Amy did some due diligence, she um. She broke down there's the stipend of all of the election workers' employees uh on an hourly basis, and then she projected it out against. Uh a nine-hour workday and a thirteen-hour workday to represent the hours that we need to cover for early voting. Um that's what I'm speaking about here, it's the whole implementation of early voting. Uh thank you. And her, you'll recall that um the registrars had asked for five employees. I'm sorry?
I don't remember, say the difference.
We um. You'll recall that the registrars had for five employees, this uh proposal figures seven for them. All of the employees uh were either on an hourly wage basis, were either brought up to uh or even raised or kept. Or they, nobody would be making less money on an hourly basis under under her proposal. Um so with that said, um. Actually, Amy, are there other points about this you want to add?
Well, so we have, everybody in yellow was actually under fifteen sixty nine an hour, which is the new minimum. Though these are not employees, these are people who choose to work a day or not. Um so they are contractors, but everything in the yellow with the two fifty two. I had to raise it to get it to fifteen seventy five, so these people were either at two fifty, two twenty five, or two hundred. In the last election in November. So they all got raised to two fifty two, then we met with Karen and Angelo and they made a request for the. Election day registration positions. Are now called same-day registration. And they made that request that they're three twenty five because they have to get on the CRS system. So they have to know more like a registrar voters or an official checker. So they ask for those to be up from the two fifty two to three twenty five. So I have made that change. But the hourly rates on the first page then um translate to the second page. For seven nine-hour primary days in August. To thirteen-hour November early voting days and twelve nine-hour. Um voting days and then April special election for nine-hour days, so this number in the previous presentation was hundred and one thousand dollars. Um because in some cases, they had twenty-five people working. In the early voting, um and it has to be only on one side of town by state requirement. And so that number was one hundred and one thousand, and and this example, it is now thirty-eight thousand. For early voting.
And using that thirty-eight thousand for early voting, the number that we have included in in the uh budget holds, right?
Yes, sixty-three thousand dollars is enough to cover the thirty-eight um from the second sheet and the twenty-three, which is. The August primary, the November election, and the referendum, first referendum, all at twenty-six individuals at the first sheet prices. So five hundred dollars for the registers and and the head moderator, and then the prices are listed all the way down to the curbside voting people. So that total is twenty-three thousand six seventy-two. Plus the thirty-eight gives us sixty-two thousand and change, and our budget is currently sixty-three thousand for election workers.
Right on the line. Now, the registrars did ask us to uh consider two other points, um they they did this via email. Um. So. Uh Mrs. Gudrow is asking that we increase the stipend for both registrars for fifteen hundreds, uh it's a five hundred dollars a day. For all primaries, this is five hundred each, for all primaries, referendum and early voting, no matter the duration. Um no, she says no consideration is given for the additional workload necessary to prepare for the above. While we're not opposed to reducing the election worker stipend for hours actually worked at the polls, the same does not hold true for us, is what she says. Um the second point that she makes is she wants to uh to increase the daily rate for checkers and ballot clerks to four hundred dollars from two hundred and fifty. Two now?
No, three twenty-five.
What am I talking about?
Official.
Ballot clerks.
No, official checkers.
Oh.
They're gonna be both official checkers and ballot clerks on the early voting, they're, one of the seven positions has kind of been combined. And she doesn't like the three twenty-five, she would like it to be a bigger number.
Right, right, so so she wants the the checkers and the ballot clerks position to be combined at four hundred for early voting. Um to replace the separate checker at three twenty-five, the ballot clerk at two fifty, is what I'm trying to get to. Um so those are, those are their requests. Um Amy Lamb had done that uh research that I referenced in our last meeting, doing the comps, I'll just run through those. Um in the town of Coventry, registrars get paid twenty-five dollars an hour, moderators get paid nineteen eighty-six. Everybody else gets paid minimum wage. In Stafford, um poll workers get eighteen dollars an hour. Um registrars and voters and deputies working early voting get twenty-five dollars an hour. And Canton, um. Uh they're talking about their their total stipends, they stipend their registrars at ten thousand dollars, deputies at three, and moderators get a flat fee. In East Grammy, um the registrars get twenty-five to thirty dollars an hour, depending on certification, the moderator gets twenty dollars an hour, everybody else gets eighteen. I think that's the end of the salary stuff, the rest of this is smacking. So that's where we are, so they asked for five, five um. Poll workers for EDR, um or not EDR, early, early voting. We have a plan that will provide them with seven, everybody's making the same or more than they're making now on an hourly basis. You have the consideration from the registrars if you want to incorporate that.
I think I need to recuse myself, since I work on election day. Um I have a working relationship with the register, so I'm gonna accuse myself for any discussion, um so this way they can.
Fair enough.
Uh. Uh I have a question. So um so you, so the registrar sat down, they told us they were gonna meet. With uh you and Jason and having discussions.
Yep.
And so the budget that you were giving us tonight came from that meeting.
Nope, I had prepared it before that meeting. And then.
So.
And then we discussed it, and the one change that came out of that meeting was the same-day registration positions. Instead of making two twenty-five that they were currently making in November, um she asked to make them three twenty-five.
So we took um your, did they look at your budget and your proposal and say? This is what we like and this is what we don't like?
Yeah, that was the three twenty-five, but then after we got that follow-up email asking, so right now they're making thirty-one twenty-five an hour.
So they agree with everything except for the two items in the email?
Yep.
So they're a hundred percent in agreement with everything but what's in the email?
Yes.
What's the additional cost to implement the two items in the email?
Um I don't know on the four hundred dollars, but on them, it's about sixteen thousand dollars. They'd be just shy of eight thousand dollars more each, this currently gives them seven thousand two hundred eighty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. On top of their stipend, which is around sixteen thousand dollars. And they're looking for another seventy-eight hundred dollars.
And they work an average between two and six hours.
Well, I think it's not, this, I think the discussion, I wasn't thinking that our discussion was about whether the registrars were. Fairly paid for their stipend or not, I mean, that's a different discussion. I thought the discussion was, what did the registrars say they need in order to be able to do early voting and?
Well, now it's about just their price, they're okay with our seven bodies at the prices with the exception of their own. Instead of getting two eighty-one twenty-five, which is thirty-one twenty-five an hour for a nine-hour day, they want that number to be five hundred. And instead of getting four oh six twenty-five, which is still the thirty-one twenty-five an hour, they want it to be five hundred. So they want to increase their portions. By sixteen thousand dollars. For the twenty-five days of early voting.
Seems to be, I think, five hundred and twenty-five twelve. Right, right, but if we don't increase their, their portion, they're even a. Are 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 you, is someone assuming that their stipend covers part of their cost for the days for voting, but traditionally, they've been, they've been getting a stipend?
They get five hundred dollars for a sixteen-hour day.
In addition to the regular work.
Yeah, and they're still getting the sixteen-hour days.
So they said if we, well, why are we saying increase the stipend to five hundred dollars per primary referendum early voting? When they're already getting five hundred dollars for those things?
They are, but they want it for all the twenty-five early voting days. And those I have adjusted to a different, same rate of pay, but different amount. Based on the number of hours that the days are covering, instead of a sixteen-hour day. As it is for a election or referendum or primary, which they do get five hundred dollars for each of those days. They want that also for all twenty-five days of early voting, whether it's nine hours or whether it's thirteen hours.
But they have to be, I understand they, they from their presentation, they need to be present. At the polling place, both registrars during the early voting.
Yes.
And so.
Well, they can be, or they can assign it to other people, but they're choosing to be.
Or someone else is gonna do it and get paid.
Yep.
And that um it's not only the the voting time, but they have to get set up, and then they have to. Finish it off, and importantly.
And they did that for everybody, everybody's actually getting extra time. It it it's only eight hours of voting, but they're paying them for nine, it's only twelve hours of voting and they're paying them for thirteen, so everybody gets time before and time after.
But the registrar, you said, instead of getting, they want five hundred dollars per day for the early voting days, and you're proposing how much?
Uh two eighty-one twenty-five for the nine-hour days or four oh six twenty-five for the thirteen-hour days.
Yeah, I think the problem is that they're not gonna be there nine hours for a nine-hour day, they're gonna be there probably fifteen or sixteen hours. Because they have to do the setup for early voting.
No, they've already budgeted that, that's why the nine hours, the nine hours is actually an eight-hour day, and they're saying they need a half an hour before and a half an hour after.
Well, they gotta bring the ballots over to the safe from the annex.
Uh they're saying they're doing that in the morning.
Not yet. They're gonna leave them in the box during the.
That's what it said, that's what they said in their presentation.
Well, I I wish they had come in tonight, but I'm hesitant to vote against what they're saying their needs are. Um but they have to express their needs and they say this, and now they're kind of, they're the ones that are being uh. Uh are are being shortened, you might say, in terms of what they requested, they've agreed to everything else to save us. Like a hundred thou, no, like, how much was it, like seventy thousand dollars it was cut, right, from their, from the, from the one hundred one thousand dollar budget?
It's about sixty thousand right now, but they're looking for fifteen of it back.
Okay, well, they they sat down and they said, okay, instead of a hundred one, we're gonna do sixty plus fifteen, seventy-five, so they worked together to come up with a. Twenty-five, twenty-six thousand dollar reduction in, in their last budget, which was down from a hundred and thirty originally. So went from a hundred and thirty to a hundred and one, and now they're down to like seventy-five. I'm just not seeing, I wish they were here, because it seems like they've done a pretty good job to work with everybody, it's just that, from the town side, it sounds like.
I tried to be fair, fair and reasonable.
This was, Bill, this election analysis Excel sheet that she presented then, was built by you.
Yep.
You figured this out.
I did all of it, yep.
Right, and then they agreed to it largely, except for then they came back afterwards with items one and two in the C M.
Yes.
But they asked for five employees, we're budgeting them percent. They asked for um to make sure that uh, well, what what Amy also did is she made sure that everybody was making at least the same, if not more. On an hourly basis than they would, they made in a, in a traditional election.
Why why are we budgeting seven if they said they only want five?
Well, because they wanted twenty-five on the November election, every day, that's why their number was so high. They were actually saying they were gonna take twenty-five people and put them in one room on one side of town. So that's equivalent, they only used twenty-six on a full election on two sides of town. And they were thinking they still needed twenty-five on one side of town.
What's the difference, I'm sorry, I asked you before, I didn't write down, the difference between what their request data versus the current budget? You said is additional sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars?
Well, I don't know what one piece of it, theirs alone is sixteen thousand dollars, the other.
That's how much they're trying to add to their stipend.
The other piece is for the official checker slash ballot people, they want seventy-five dollars more. A day for every person for all twenty-five days. So that's gonna be another probably four or five thousand dollars.
Well, my suggestion is.
For twenty-five days.
Yeah, my suggestion would be to add back the sixteen and let them figure out how they want to figure out the other part of it on their own. Because I don't want to be uh, they they've agreed to everything else. Except they're holding firm on a couple of items, and they felt that they need these, these uh to be paid fairly for their work, they feel that they need that. And I don't want to say, no, you know, it's our job to determine. What what's a fair pay, I mean, we have done it already in terms of all this stuff, but I don't want to be Michael managing their, but they're only making, what's they owe? The the registrar beginning paying seventeen thousand dollars a year for their work.
Yeah, for four hours a week, and then they get paid for all elections.
Well, we don't know, I don't know if it's four hours a week, they haven't told us.
That's the time sheets that say.
Time sheets, if you want to see it, three years worth of time sheets representing four hours a week.
Okay, they were four hours a week, and then during the elections, they do.
And they get paid during the elections.
Yeah, and other.
Additional money on top of the stipend.
And other registrars make like full-time salaries, and other registrars make like less, it depends on the different town and how they.
So we did, we did a salary assessment of.
Last year.
Voters and voters last year, and we are consistently on the high end for pay for towns our size. If you go to Hartford or, you know, Meriden or something like that, you're gonna get a different number, but if you're looking at. Um towns that are comparable in terms of voters to town of East Windsor, voters at polling places. We are consistently on the high end, like the the top of the pace.
You're studying.
Can I just ask for some clarification on something, so they're going to be getting their regular stipend, and then for all of early voting, they would be getting. Two eighty-one twenty-five for nine hours, or four oh six twenty-five for thirteen-hour days?
Yes.
In addition to their regular stipend.
So that total is seven thousand two eighty-one twenty-five for the twenty-five days.
Thank you.
So the only problem we're trying to solve here is incorporating early voting, right, I mean, we, last year, we. Figured out that they're fairly paid. And taking care of salary compression otherwise. So I think I'm personally only looking at what we can do to make sure we're covering early voting, and then. If that turns out, you know, we find out this year that, you know, that was not enough, I'd be happy to revisit it next year, but for me. I'm only looking at what we're gonna solve for this year, right? So I don't think that. Personally, that, I don't think that we need to increase the stipend. Number two, I don't know, like, you know, like, you're quicker at math than all of us here, but. Like, what's the difference with number two, is that, is that something that's gonna help us, or?
Well, keep in mind that they, their election workers is a, it's just a budget. You know, they get to manage out who who they're going to hire for what. Um the, we are supposed to be setting the rates of pay for registrars and voters, assistant registrars and elections. Um but ultimately, if they decide they need, you know, eleven people for early voting uh for the presidential primaries, but three for. The budget referendum, they can decide that, you know, the the number shifts based on their management of it. We have, we are supposed to be setting their budget and their rates of pay.
So it does, it's just a little cleaner just to leave things as a, a checker gets this. But this, the ballot clerk gets that, so we know what we're paid for based on what's been submitted to us, basically, right?
And just another question, so during early voting, for example, the ballot clerk would make. Fifteen seventy-five an hour, whatever, two fifty-two, on a regular election day, are they getting a higher um. Wage for the actual day, and this is a different rate, no, it's the same regardless.
Seventy-five is the same, what I took was, so the, these people weren't only getting two fifty, but they were under the fifteen sixty-nine.
Okay.
So I upped them to two fifty-two to get them over it, so they're getting fifteen seventy-five by getting two fifty-two for the sixteen-hour day.
Okay.
Based on a sixteen-hour day. I took that same fifteen seventy-five and did it times nine and did it times thirteen to come up with a hundred and forty-one seventy-five for a nine-hour day. Or two oh four seventy-five for a thirteen-hour day.
Thank you.
So they're always getting the same hourly rate, it's just based on the number of hours that they work.
Okay.
But they're not hourly, they're not employees, they're gonna get a stipend for each of those days that they choose to work.
I guess I'm just a little confused because I know I wasn't here for that presentation, but watching the video back. Correct me if I'm wrong, I thought it was proposed that they got paid a certain amount on election day for something, and then a cert. They were proposing a different amount for early voting, is.
Yeah, and that's what we're doing.
Okay.
So basically, this first column for twenty-four twenty-five is the new rates for all the. So basically, this first column for twenty-four, twenty-five is the new rates for all the yellow because they were under fifteen sixty-nine. So I upped them all to fifteen seventy-five an hour.
Okay.
So the first column is what they would get for the primary day, the election day and the referendum days.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
The total they would get and the other amounts are the amounts they would get during the early voting.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. I appreciate it. But it's unknown. I mean, this is all new to all the towns and you have to kinda see how it goes.
Right, and so that, that's actually working in our favor is we could, we could move this forward, review what their um. Needs are based on the presidential primary and the board finance could adjust if necessary. But Amy's done good due diligence here to figure out, you know, what is representative of what their own ask of us was and actually done a little bit better by them on it. Um, so I would, I would like to see us move forward with the one seventeen, three sixty-four. And then if there's an issue that it's demonstrated, or if we, even if we hear about issues around the state that could be comparable. Then um, that's something that we could bring back during the board finance process. One, my late. I hope we've been waiting.
Nobody's talked, said words and so you might have heard.
What happened?
A budget meeting.
Yeah, I got it. That's fine.
All right, so I'll make a motion to accept the proposed registrar of voters budget at one hundred seventeen thousand three hundred sixty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose?
No.
Parents? Uh. Oh, that's right. I'm sorry, objection. Planning. Any questions or comments on the planning budget?
Jason, I think we need the, did you vote on the last?
I only vote if there's a tie.
I think you need majority of the, of the people here to approve it.
Present and voting.
Right, so.
Two, one, one?
You get some majority of the, of the people?
President and voting. On, on the planning budget.
Move to approve the planning budget at two hundred and eighty-two thousand three hundred and forty-one.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the planning department? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Uh, planning and zoning commission.
Move to approve the planning and zoning commission at five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Zoning Board of Appeals.
Move to approve the zoning Board of Appeals at two thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Property insurance.
Move to approve property insurance at one hundred and ninety-one thousand five hundred dollars.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Inland wetlands.
Move to approve inland wetlands at two thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Veterans commissions.
Move to approve a veterans commission at fifteen hundred dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agricultural commission.
Move to approve the agricultural commission at seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Conservation commission.
I'll move to approve the conservation commission at eight hundred twenty-five dollars.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Economic Development Commission.
Move to approve the economic development commission at eighteen hundred dollars.
Is there a second? Asking again, is there a second?
Um, I'll second it for discussion.
Seconded for discussion, Marie.
What am I missing here? They originally put in for two of nine hundred.
The formula just didn't carry. That's all. So they're uh.
They asked for nine hundred for professional services and nine hundred for their corporate secretary.
It's professional services. So this is wrong. Yeah, this is wrong. It's eighteen hundred in total, nine hundred for professional services.
Do they have a forum? Do they have enough members?
No.
No, uh, they have spent nothing this year other than sending uh.
They don't ever spend anything.
Um, uh, the last couple of years, they've had one fifty, five fifty and six hundred. So a few meetings. Only one in twenty-two, twenty-three and none so far this year.
I think they're waiting for, for that resignation that was entered. It's not, it's the, the. Jason, the resignation from economics development, the one, the gentleman that resigned at the meeting. It's in a minute. He said, I resigned. He got it and walked out. Is that an official resignation?
No, he never submitted anything to the clerk.
But he's never come back to any meetings.
Correct.
And they don't have a forum.
Correct.
I think I asked one before when we did uh, a chance of coming back in the future. Can we do that?
Still members.
Well, I know people that were on, that was five. It just needs to apply.
Yeah, they just need to apply.
And then, and then we, we consider the appointments and pay them. One more else.
So at least there's a chance of them reconstituting, I guess?
Because it's a, it's a charter commission.
Yeah.
They don't have a, no choice in it. It's just, they're sort of retarded. Either funded to zero or funded to do the work out of the charter, but you can't, um, sound like the diversity council.
No, I, I get that. I just, I've had a problem just over the years. I've never really felt like they've had uh, anything at it with the bottom line. So I agree with you. Anyway.
So a, a motion was made and seconded for discussion. Is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Police department.
Move to approve the police department at proposed budget at four million forty-seven thousand nine hundred nineteen.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Police commission. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the police making budget um, of seventeen, one thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Emergency management.
Move to approve emergency management at thirty-five thousand five hundred and forty-three dollars.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Building department.
Move to approve the building department at two hundred and one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Communications.
Move to approve communications at fifty-seven thousand twenty-seven dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Public works.
Public Works proposed budget at one million two hundred and fifty-seven, six hundred and forty-three thousand.
Uh, one million two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty-three.
That what I said?
Uh, I got that number right.
Sorry.
Motion has been made. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I have, I have some discussion.
Go right ahead.
So this was one of the two departments I spoke about earlier. They were asked to come in at a two percent uh, budget increase. This department, as a total budget of one point two five seven million dollars came in at a three point nine two percent. They didn't tell us why they needed to come in above the two percent. The comment about earlier from the treasurer about union contracts, this, this salary increases are substantially greater. Than the amounts in the union contracts. Unexplained why we need to have. To have those kinds of increases in the budget of this wills. I just don't understand why this the budget, this department. Got a free pass and um, gets to submit the budget, but whatever your request is and. We, we just fund it. It doesn't set a bad example for the other departments that did their due diligence and came in at below the two percent. Some of them coming in substantially below that, making it easy for us to pass a budget. I think it just sets a bad example for us to pass a budget at this kind of increase. With these kind of salary increases that paroxysy union uh, contractual agreements. Without an explanation from the department head as to why this is justified. So I just would not support this. It needs to be justified and it needs to be fair amongst all the departments.
So I know you were um, just newly elected when we ratified the contract, but what you probably don't know is the staffing uh, seniority down there. The contract has a three-year step in until you're at full pay. We had three of the, that employees that are covered by the collective bargaining agreement. All step into that full step in this proposal. So that's why the, the number is in excess of what's in the, the contract number, because they're all the way onboarded and they're at full pay per the terms of the contract.
Well, I voted against the last union contract because I also thought the last union contract of this department was so one-sided. In favor of the town at all and was so one-sided in favor of the uh, employees. That the town got hit so hard. I mean, to me, if you can't, if you can't come in within budget, you reorganize your staffing and you plan for it. If you're gonna give everyone promotions or step increases at a top of that salary increases. Then find a way to be more efficient or adjust your staffing, because these are not sustainable increases in a, in the budget. I mean, every other department came in, except for one, came in as requested. This department didn't seem to make any effort at all to come in. I mean, they have an overtime in, in addition to their. Salary increases of four point one seven percent. And their part-time salary increases. They came in with overtime at two point seven five percent increase. Why do they have sixty thousand dollars of overtime?
The snow.
Well, if they're gonna plow the roads.
Yeah, okay, well, well, just, adjust the department sound, adjust the department head count, adjust the department somehow to make this work. So there was no snow this last summer, this last winter.
How much is there gonna be this coming winter?
Okay, well, you plan for what's happening on average. Like, we're, like, we're paying this and we're not going to salt now. We're paying this a huge amount for salt. You should have salt left over for last year.
So if you look at the overtime line. It was fifty-seven five in FY twenty-one, twenty-two, forty-two in FY twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, this year is low as of December thirty-first. Um, this is based on the historical trend and, and the contract adjustment.
I don't agree. The last actual was forty-two sixty-five. The reason that you're, there's no reason to budget for sixty when the, when the last annual was twenty-two. Budget for what it, what historically it's been.
I think they're over budget now. There's the storms were both Sunday that came in.
Yeah, Sunday, Sunday is adult. I just, yeah, I wanna bring up to, it's not just snowstorms. We, you know, the summer storms when you're cleaning up is overtime.
Threes.
Listen, I'm, I'm not asking, I'm not asking to Michael manage a department, but when you have a department with a million to one point two five million dollars. And all the other departments came in within budget. And this department, they all had the same issues, step increases, salary increases and.
No, they, no, they.
No.
They don't have step increases.
No, they, they do not. The clerical unit has grade, grants, no steps. Um, the police department, which is out of contract for their, their police officers and dispatchers, they do have a step in grade system, but you're not gonna see that in their budget because they're out of contract. No other department has a step in grade system. It's actually a major frustration of mine that that's the way they.
Well, I was told before when I asked the treasurer, if all of the, all of the union contracts uh, anticipated contractual increases are in budget, and the answer is yes.
Uh, the answer is yes, but not in their department.
Okay, but even if you added contractual increases, it's not gonna, there's point four, five percent. I mean, the police department came in at, 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 at less than half a percent spending increase. A department that's twice the size with, with uh, twenty, there are almost thirty employees managing overtime. Those guys came in at a half a percent or less than half a percent. This department is coming in at three point nine two percent. I mean, if they were, maybe they should be running as efficiently as the police department, but I'm not gonna support this kind of budget increase. This is, every department except for one other one did what they were asked to do, including the police department this year tonight. Every single one of them. And then this department gets an exception to the rule. And we're gonna, and, and it's just not right. It's just not right for, fair to the other departments. It's not fair for the other services in town. It's not fair for our residents and our taxpayers that expect fair treatment amongst the different departments. So I'm just gonna vote no for this department. I can't support this. It's way too much.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I have comments, but it is, but it is disputed and solved. It's no sense of saying anything. Um, but I will anyways. You can't compare them to the police department. Police department can fix things that they do. This department. Your budget based upon history, how many storms that we've had, and if anybody has been here during that time where we had trees down everywhere in town, um. That's, that's a lot of extra hours that they put in. Um, yeah, they may save a little bit of money this year on the snowplow because we didn't have snowplow. But they still had to sand all the roads. That's all overtime. You have a parking rack operation that they, they assist with. Um, based upon their great okay for the hours to do what needs to be done on off, off kinds. Uh, plus the costs of material have gone up tremendously, um, just like the cost of food has gone up, just like the cost of gas has come up. Their costs have gone up tremendously. Um, so I think in line with what they're doing and how they're doing it. And the fact that they may be over spent this year, um. It's within line where they should be. Um, I don't see them spending anything previously. But that's just.
All right, it's seven o'clock. The regularly, this election's gotta get started. Any other comments on this budget? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're gonna stop there.
May I adjourn this then?
Uh, yeah.
Move to adjourn the budget workshop at seven P M.
Second.
All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?